All right. I want to welcome everybody to March 4th. Water and Sewer Project Work Session. Could I get a approval of the agenda, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second, on my favor, I. Let's have it. Mr. Riddler, you want to start off?
I can start off, Mr. Chairman. So, we've got a couple of things on the work session agenda tonight, or for this afternoon. The first is water and sewer projects, and I know some time ago, the board had indicated they wanted to do a work session to kind of go over what we've got going on and looking at some future projects. So, we've got that for you. We've got an outline that's on the desk before you that me and Brandon and Tim have assembled, and so I think Tim will probably lead us through talking about those projects and be happy to answer any questions on those as we go through. And then, the second item we have on the agenda for today is the package sales ordinance, and Tim Petrowski is going to join us when we get to that part. I suspect the water and sewer portion will take a good bit of our couple hours, but hopefully we can have some good discussion about the zoning piece of the package sales today.
All right.
With that, if it's okay with you, Tim can...
Probably so, yeah.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I took Jason's list and went through and made some updates for me to try to make sure I cover everything and not forget anything. Sewer. The Grisleville Industrial Park Force Mine, they're waiting on final little bit of materials. They started working, gathering, getting things together yesterday. So, I would think probably first next week, we'll be under full construction. Sun Valley metering. Any questions on Grisleville? All right. Sun Valley metering. We need to do some fire hydrant testing around Dusty Lane and New Clinton Road, determine what flows are available. Making water authorities seem to be concerned if we would have fire flow to cover the area. Once that testing is performed, we'll plug them into the water model specifically focusing on the Sun Valley area, make sure we have sufficient fire flow for the area. All right. Leftover Jifa clean water funds. As y'all know, when we bid at Grisleville Industrial Park Force Mine, we had about nine, twenty-nine-hundred thousand and a million dollars left over. We have talked among ourselves about several different projects that need to be done, would be of possible use for those, for that money. Wendy, I'm on the outline Jason gave you.
Thank you.
Under leftover Jifa clean water funds. River North condominium lift station replacement. The pump station has never worked as well as it is right now. Granted, it still has some deficiencies as far as the site and bypass pumping and those kind of things. The station needs some updates and upgrades to bring it into the 20th century. River North Lift Station Replacements. Station two, which is Wimbledon, Station three is Eagle, need to be replaced with submersible pumps. The infiltration for these areas is severe, and replacement parts are not holding up. We're reaching their pump life in a year, possibly no more than two years at the most. So, if I've got a pump part that's got a 5,000-hour pump life, I'm burning that up in a year, year and a half. I mean, these two stations are a constant issue with us. The next item really goes with those lift station replacements. Sewer line rehab. In May of '12, we bid 3,815 millimeter feet of senior tier sewer rehabilitation, completing it May of 2012. We went from Station one, which is at the old treatment plant, around to the east, under the lake, up parallel to the lake, again, under the lake, and parallel to River North Boulevard and stopped. It has helped, but there's still a whole another side that has not been touched, is probably in the 6,000, 7,000-foot length, and then there's probably another 3,000 or 4,000 feet that we hadn't touched on the east side. It actually may be a little bit more than that. We know up by the 16 Green, 17 T, there's a manhole in the creek, there's sunlight in it. I mean, it's original, it's not in good shape. That's a possibility for some of that money. Next item, this is a good one. Somewhere during the time when Hampton Lakes was developed, on the Coal Drive Shelby Court area, sewer was run up Coal Drive, so it's in front of the houses. There are three or four houses along the west side of Coal Drive that are served out the back. They run out to a sewer line and run down the property line, and they feed into a septic tank that has a drain field. It's not connected to the pump station. The drain field's next to the pump station, but it's not connected to the pump station. And then, when Shelby Court was developed, there were several houses there that tied into that same sewer line. Do we own that?
We own that property now.
We own the property now. So, these folks, their sewer system was really a community system. Jones County didn't own it, of course, they were paying us for sewer service. I think the property was taken through a tax lift where the drain field was.
They're paying Jones County for sewer service, but they have a septic tank?
Correct. About seven of them own a septic tank with a drain field.
And it hasn't been working either?
What year was that?
Yeah, it's not. That's the problem. That's what brought it to the attention, is that some of the houses off Shelby, I don't know if condemned is the right word, are closed because sewer system's not working. They appear to be abandoned. Some of them appear to be abandoned.
I think when, and Brandon's been very close to this whole thing and can tell it a whole lot better than I can, but I think, and this is before Brandon's time, but I think when we tied in to the sewer line, it was actually not a sewer. We thought there was a sewer line, but it turned out to be a line going to this community septic system.
It appears to run through their backyards.
Hampton Lakes, not Clifton Ridge?
Hampton Lakes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's on the edge of Hampton Lakes and...
It's where the double Iger is, right?
Jones Crossing. At the heels there. Shelby's on one side and Cole's on the other side.
That's correct.
But this is even before you tapped that on.
Oh, yeah. I was just making sure, because I remember something about it, but it was subdivision on it.
That subdivision years ago had problems with the septic systems there backing up in the houses.
This is back with Mike Underwood.
Yeah.
Yes.
And the health department guy that, years ago, before Floyd Comer. This is before Floyd. Floyd inherited that mess down there.
But then, we've inherited it. So, there's a line that they're all tied into a common line, though, that goes to a septic tank.
It was the guy before Floyd.
So, it could potentially, if we were going to fix the problem, do we tie into that line and take it to the sewer?
No, that station has to be moved. It appears the station's not deep enough. The pump station on Coal Drive is a little two-inch grinder pump, a little package unit. So, to fix it, you would end up moving it downstream somewhere, and then you could tie it all together.
Well...
Instead of moving, basically starting over and building a new one?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
So, does everybody else in that subdivision have septic tanks?
No.
No, ninety percent of it is on our sewer system.
At Hampton Lakes is grabbing it.
Not in Trail Park side, but Hampton Lakes, ninety, oh, ninety percent of them have.
So, Jones Crosses is septic tank?
Correct.
Yes.
And there have been several, I think it's three or four lots that are condemned, if you will, out of terminology, that Health Department won't let anybody live on because their tanks failed. And the only kind of system that allows them to, is the anaerobic, aerobic system, like the mini wastewater plant in your yard, they're fifteen, twenty thousand dollars.
So, can we add to that list Ruby Drive?
I got them, I actually added, got it next.
Okay.
I added it on my notes. It's not on this one.
And I know Alton, you know, they've been talking and calling for years on Alton.
So, any other questions about Cole or Shelby?
So, is it all the houses on Shelby, or just the ones that back up with Cole?
Just the ones that back up toward Cole, and I don't think all of them. I think there are three of them. The last time I was there, I think there were three of them abandoned. I don't think all of them were abandoned. I would assume the further up Shelby you are, the higher you are, you're not having problems because it's draining out on somebody else down the hill.
Everybody in my neighborhood has issues with their septic tanks.
How many homes?
I play out there, I mentioned this.
Yeah. It was approved...
In Jones Crosson?
Yeah.
Oh, it's over a hundred lots.
The ones that are having problems?
The ones that I've heard from are Shelby Court.
Okay.
Just tie up directly to us. And they're going across the street from Shelby that they're having issues to live at. They come. Health Department was about to tell them a few months ago that they had to put this expensive system in, or they can't live in the property.
With the extra money, what would recommendations, I'm just... Well, we're not through yet. We're not through yet? Or we still got recommendations to talk about? Well, I mean, they're... I'm just, I'm just... Keep seeing dollar signs going, every more project.
So, just out of curiosity, will the tax allocation district at River North help cover River North's issues?
So, that's a note I just made for y'all to kind of think about is, do you want to go back to the residents of River North and ask them to authorize more borrowing through that special tax district to address some of these things? Because, I mean, I think the need is, you know, plenty large enough to justify the costs associated with all that. But it's just kind of a question for y'all is, you know, do you feel comfortable going to them and asking, one, and then, two, would they actually vote to go along with that?
Sure. We'll get there, I'm sure.
And if we're going to ask them about sewer upgrades, they want to talk about the water upgrade, get rid of the old line in there, or lines.
Do it all at once, be done with it, because you're going to have to dig up the road, you know?
Do it all, tear it up all at one time?
My last one I have, and Jason has these notes for y'all. Mountain Hills, Bethune Avenue, Ruby Drive, McCrery Drive, Alton Way, or Alton Road. It's one of the older developed areas in the county, borders New Clinton, Joy Cliff, and around the Shady Road Plaza. We had some preliminary layouts from 2019. It's a very large service area, there are a few hundred customers in there. It's difficult to go in an area like that and serve it with sewer, because you're going through backyards, you're taking down fences, you're moving little buildings, storage buildings in the backyard. It would require numerous easements. We looked at one of the options, to stay in the road right of way, and we obliterate the road in three or four places. I mean, because we're so deep, we would just, the road would just be completely gone, which means we'd have to do something with the water and then put the road back. This area is a potential CDBG target area, but CDBG brings one million in funding to the table every other year. And we've got some layouts, we can send y'all if y'all want to see those. However, what do you want to do with that?
We, I remember one time we had that area approved, right? But we didn't approve the CDBG match. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, when we did Sun Valley, and we set the station for Sun Valley that pumps over to the Clifton Ridge sewer line. We set it where we could extend up the creek and run through this area, and it would actually drain all the way to Shady Road Plaza. All that area can be served by gravity. It's just, I would be surprised if they didn't do all of it. You're going to spend fifteen million bucks, just because sewer is so stinking high. I mean, it's just, it's unfortunate, I mean, it's really unfortunate, I mean...
Tim, can I say one thing just?
Please.
So, it used to be that CDBG was this nice thing, and you could put together a meaningful project, that the million dollars would mostly pay, or $750,000 back in the day, that it would mostly pay for. The issue we have now is that everything's so expensive. A million dollars is great, and I mean, but it just doesn't go very far, and so, when we talked about those a couple of years ago, that was kind of where we ran into a snag, was, you know, it's a million bucks, but I mean, the projects too, are, you know, a million seven fifty or something, that you're going to have to come up with, you know, a big chunk to go with it, and depending on the project, I mean, you could have to come up with multiple millions to go with it. And so, I would say, I wouldn't discourage the whole CDBG thing, but just know if you've got a project that you're going to fund some other way, and it's in an area that might qualify for CDBG, that might be a nice way to offset a million dollars of it. But anymore, it's not a way to pay for a whole project, so...
Jason, is any of that property formerly, before the consolidation, it was in Beavon, we pulled it back into Jones?
I don't know the exact boundaries of that, but it's...
Kingsview Village was annexed.
Yeah, it would be on the backside of most of that.
And that's, and if I understand where Kingsview Village is, it's at the top of the hill, so it drains that way. Everything we're looking at drains the other way, and it drains to the creek that runs through Sun Valley.
I was just thinking about pulling some more, some pulling power from the Bibb County legislators too, because he's making us a big interest to theirs, so we could get close to what he's making.
Alton is close, Ruby Drive?
Well, all of that, Ruby and Bradley and Shady Road Plaza and Bethune, all used to be annexed in Bibb County.
That was before my time.
Right.
But I know Kingsview was annexed around my time.
Yeah.
But I lived in Elaine Lucas's district.
Because they were able to get service for fire and everything else in that area.
So, they were, yeah, they were part of the city.
Years there, and they could choose, they could choose to go to Jones County or Bibb County schools through that whole area, so...
Lost my fire protection.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Water projects. Elevated tank at Light and Tide over on the ways moved along, center piers poured, completed. Two of the leg pads and piers are completed, they're working on the two. You will not see them for the next week. The foreman there, Matt, had a death in the family, and they packed up and went home this morning, so he could take care of that. The elevated tank itself is being fabricated. I really look forward to be down here in early April, and you'll start seeing it go up. Graham Road Phase Two, they're moving along pretty good in the subdivision and on Graham Road. They're at Terry Jackson's house down around Semirhan Court and Graham Road on that end, and they're coming out of Graham Woods toward the front. We stopped them from digging today to make sure everything was taken care of for the rain coming in the morning, storm erosion and all that kind of stuff. Highway 49 Phase One, that's been a fun project. We are hung up with easement. Jason used to have more hair until we started that, trying to get the easement, but cause this has been an adventure. Martin Marietta gave us easements without any problem, signed them, but we've had trouble on the other side. And then, we've run into another issue, which is pretty easy to resolve, but we just got to get it resolved. In front of Hazel Trucking, there's a big cross train creek area. Apparently, years ago, that was a swamp or a wetland or something. It was filled over in grass. We dug through the crust, saw the track out, wet it all away, had water running in it, and they had to get a pretty large bulldozer out there to get it out, and so...
And that's in the Hazel's Trucking side?
Yes.
In the field, or just the easement?
It starts, basically at the ditch line and goes up into the field. So, we'll direction board, we'll do a change order, add that directional board, just take out the pipe. That's the only way we're going to get through there.
Because I know that they had said that if it needed to go up higher into the field...
I got to go about 60 feet into the field to get around it.
I don't think that would be a, have y'all...
That's a problem.
Because I know the people behind them, the...
Cost is probably going to be a problem there, but you got to go 60 foot.
Yeah, we got to go out and come around and come back.
Come back in.
Yeah, they... Windstream has not been our friend out there, as far as getting stuff located. We tore his phone line out of the ground two or three times, where they were down for a few days. He's not real happy with us. Of course, it's hard to miss the phone cable when you don't know it's there. It's pretty easy to reach out and grab a bucket of dirt, pull it, and tear 30 feet out of the ground, too, while you're... I shut down Americas one day with a locator that was in the wrong place.
It happens.
We'll direction board and tie that and keep going. Just curiosity, not stopping before we get away from it. Easement, is it multiple people or is it one person? Have you heard, you haven't heard back from her lately, have you?
Is it the one in more statements?
No. It's the corner of Cumblow and 49. It's that corner across from the phone, you know, where the phone box sits there? It's that corner across from there. When DOT widened the roadway, they didn't get additional right of way. Don't hold me to this, but there are three fibers on Cumblow, there are three or four that run up 49 between the edge of pavement and the phone box on the south side of Cumblow. There are five, I think there are five phone lines. I mean, it's just full, and they have, they own, the phone company owns the corner, that would be the west, the east side of 49 and Cumblow. They own a 50 or 60-foot square, and it's full, it's full of cabling, and so, it's difficult to dig and do a bore. When you open a bore pit up, you've got four or five cables hanging in there on top of you. It's difficult to work around them. So, we're just going to go around all of it, you know, get off the right of way, clear the woods, make the bore, and that has not happened.
To hold out, how big of a distance do you have to travel?
The easement area we're looking for is 40-foot square. The problem I've got, when I bore from Cumblow under 49, I've got at least three phone cables in the bore trains with me, which is 10 by 40. So, they're just basically hanging, and all of them are fiber optic. I don't know if they're hot. If they're not hot, I don't worry about breaking them, but if they're hot, just the right pop, break.
You don't want to pop it.
Yeah.
You don't want to pop it.
So, the other issue we run into, when you pull in the Pitts Chapel, you know, you've got that, all that big open area, they didn't right of way. None of it's right of way. Right of way's up against the edge of pavement. There was no right of way acquired when any of that was done. Same property owns that side as well. So, they were communicating with Jason, he's reached out to another attorney that he knows, and it's just kind of gone quiet.
Is it the 84 acre?
So, there's nothing there, it's just...
Right. Right, it's just woods.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah. This is a piece across the road from there, Jason? Is that piece, and this piece right here?
Well, the other side of the road is Vulcan.
Uh huh. So, it's tied up in LLC?
Ink.
Where are they at? Jason's been dealing with a vegan. I mean, I don't see the...
The lady that...
It's on there somewhere.
When they have to try to do stuff up in our number and not on ours.
How far are we from that project in terms of working? How far are we from that area?
We're across the street.
I mean, like, right now, we're across the street?
I'm 100 feet. I've pretty much come to a standstill, because, and we have discussed this, and I know it would not go over well, but we have discussed this going out there on Saturday, and up at Cumblow Road and crossing it, just deal with it, close it down for a day and get across it. But I need to be at DOT right of way to do that, which means I have to get back four or five feet behind the right of way to do that, and that's the phone company, and I mean, it's, you can go out there and you see holes all in the ground, and all those different holes represents a different phone line.
That's where the property is cleared, when you turn on Cumblow, right there on the right-hand side.
Yes. So, we've gone back, said, got it set up, sent a contract to plan, said, can you make this bore? It's a longer bore. They're out there looking at the phone cables, trying to see if they can dig up enough to move them back and make the bore, so...
Would the sewer help to serve Martin Marietta?
Not really.
Okay. Just thinking of getting the governor's office involved, because at that level, it's not local, is.
Jason, you've talked to them personally, or just...
I've talked to their attorney on the phone, their local counsel on the phone a couple times, and he's tried, he helped me get in touch with the right people one time, and then, after months, it went cold, and he's tried to revive the thing, and then we've gone round and round with their corporate people, their land people, and I'm not sure what the concern is. We got to final documents, like, they said, we'd like you to make this, this, and this change, add these things to the drawing, add these things to the easement description, we did all that, and then it just, like, went away. And I mean, I, it was not just one person I was communicating with, it was like four or five there, and I'm not sure what the, I don't know if it got to the last person on the Toven Pole, the top person on the Toven Pole, and ran into issues, or what it was, but...
It died a very quiet, quick death.
So, how long does eminent domain take? Imminent domain, how long does it take?
Vulcan owned it.
Yeah, that's what I...
That's what I'm, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's got Birmingham address.
I mean, which just means that it's owned by corporate. Most of that property there is, all of it's bought.
I mean, if this other, if this other route will work, we're just coming back up this way, coming north a little bit, and then doing the other. I mean, if that...
And welcome to one giving us our downwards.
To the whole thing.
So...
So. I'll probably start with a, a letter of intent of condemnation. If, if there's, if there's no other result. I mean, I don't think that we can let a forty foot by forty foot up, hold up sewer for the rest of Jones County. Or water for the rest of Jones County.
I mean, just.
No patience.
Just thought. I mean, start locally. I mean, I, you know, we, we did get some zoning done for them. I finally figured out where that place is. I know every inch of that place. I'm going as much lands they got there, they bought it from Phil Billings. I'm sorry, I just kept looking, my nerve bifocals weren't focusing. I finally figured out where it was. Cause they, they own several pieces to there.
They own all of it from Cumeslow all the way back to Light and Ty through there.
Well, I think we come from just a, we just come from the point of we're not letting that hold up water for this big of a project. It's a community service that's needed. And we need to come to some kind of agreement or some kind of, you know, we gotta have some kind of negotiation on getting that.
Well, that piece of property right there is in their fifty-year plan for rock.
And that may be the issue. I don't know.
Well, both sides of that road.
But we need to be on Martin Marietta's side. Is what you need to, need to be on the.
I gotta, to do that, I gotta take down their fence and their front sign to get through there because of all the other junk.
Alright, so we need to be on the west side of that.
So that's why we went to the other side trying to get around Martin Marietta's sign and deposit us there and the fencing and all that.
But they still gonna have to have a buffer. I mean, hey, beat us what, but that, I know for a fact that is their fifty-year. I mean, I've worked out there for so long, I, I mean, I just look, I said, dummy man, I know where that thing is. I mean, that's their fifty-year plan for rock. If you ask them how much rock they got, they got fifty years with the rocks in there.
But they ain't gonna dig that close to our road. Well, I mean, we got protections against that and they gotta have a buffer and easement. And that easement's gotta be more than forty foot off the road.
And it may, and I, I ran into this about three weeks ago at one of the Kellin mines. Is, we were talking about an easement and the guy told me, said, as long as we own that property, you're under IMSA. If you own the property, you do whatever you want to with it. And it may be the same with them since that's a mine. And maybe we need to own the property and then they don't have to worry about any government. You know, we don't have to worry about all the government regulations when we get on there and do some work or do a repair or that kind of thing.
Well, I, I think it bodes well for more discussion because, I don't know. I personally wouldn't be held, uh, I wouldn't be held up for forty foot of land for no reason.
Right.
And he's already been standing for four months.
Yeah. Cause they, they come to us for a lot of stuff. And if we ain't all playing on the same game, then we ain't playing the same game.
Right.
You see, we're all coming with it. That's their fif- that's their fifty-year plan of rock.
I get it, but fifty years, they give up forty foot of it.
Forty foot to the, uh, uh, state highway? They ain't gonna be blasting forty feet from the state highway. That's always gonna be a state highway.
It'll be a buffer or burn.
That's right, it's gonna be a burn.
They ain't buffering all day long, we just need under it.
And the other side of the property is for Marietta.
Just a week.
But there's still the chance that this other, you know, movement and doing the bore that way will work if they can get around those phone lines.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not like we have to alter course just yet.
And I, I don't like starting with the threat of condemnation because none of us wanna do that. We haven't yet and we definitely don't wanna do that. But I mean, bottom line, they, I hope they would not expect for a forty-foot easement to, to stop a water line that serves.
Well, with the board's permission, uh, permission, I, I'll check the contacts I've had. You know, back when I was doing all that work out there, just to see if they're still in place. And just say, hey, you know, what can we do? It might be somebody here locally can tell corporate that we need to.
Right.
Work with them.
Yeah, we need some, we need somebody to work with us on that one for sure.
If y'all don't mind, I, I, I will reach out and say, hey, but I've still got some of my Vulcan contacts.
I just, I just texted Danny.
I'm okay with it at the end, but I'd also like Ashley to send that letter of intent. Hey, you know, if you're gonna make a phone call, we'll give you a couple of weeks and then, alright, let's go.
So, y'all, I'll make a few phone calls and say, look, you know, we got, there's gotta be a win-win on this deal. That's what they bought it for, was that fifty-year supply.
McKenzie Road, Brandon's waiting on me on that. I told him I'd mark an aerial up, give him some quantities and we'll, we'll get that wrapped up so that they can get that taken care of. Uh, phase two and phase three, highway forty-nine, they are complete. We're working with the state on the SERP document. I'd hope to be done by now, but bureaucracy's at its best. Uh, but the plans are ready to go. We're, we're ready to go. New Well, let me, while I'm thinking of, you wanna talk about the county below us at this same time or you gonna wait and do that later?
I think we've got that on here somewhere, but.
Okay.
Whenever you want to.
I will stay with the outline. New Well at Masseyville, uh, we should have you drawn by the end of the week for access and whatnot so we can talk to the property owner. Uh, we feel like that's gonna be, that's good potential there. Uh, I've got a call in to Michael Gillis at the state trying to get a site visit set up for him to come down and look at it, which I would expect to be two to three weeks. Light and Ty booster station, uh, building the new tank. We knew we'd have to have a booster station to maintain it. We have found an area, we're looking at having the fieldwork done now, what we think's the best area to, to do that with. Uh, it'll probably be first of next month at or at least before we have something for you. Couple of properties there, we'll need to get a fifty by fifty or something like that. Couple of different options for property owners. Water meter upgrades, that has been submitted to Jifa. Uh, I was supposed to have a call today. She was out, cause she was out sick yesterday, so my phone call has been bumped till tomorrow, tomorrow morning. Projects under consideration. We have had conversations, you know, going towards Weeks County didn't work. We have had conversations, we know there's some interest from Wilkinson County about developing something out around the nitrogen road area. Uh, they, they have a large development tract there, spur line, substation gas, part of it's in Jones, part of it's in Wilkinson. They have three wells. The wells have some age on them, but they do produce a pretty good quality of water. Uh, so we have looked at that area as a potential new water plant. And we have looked at what up, what changes to phase two and phase three highway forty-nine that we would need to do because of increased pressure, increased pumping capacity. Uh, we've got those mapped out. We, I know what I need to do there. If, if Wilkinson County is an option, we need to approach them. It's time to make a deal or try to make a deal or talk to them to see what we can do. Seeking guidance from Regional Commission State on the state. I call these the COVID ARPA funds. Uh, I feel sure we can use the additional money we got to upsize lines in the Grizzleville shortcut area. Uh, some of them will go to a sixteen and some of it'll be ductile iron because of high pressures. Uh, we do know for sure we cannot go outside the original scope of the project. So that area that was in that project up submitted, all the money has to be spent in there. So things to consider, planning for the remaining bond funds. We've got approximately two million dollars just left out of the bond funds is what we're estimating. Henderson Road could use some upgrades. Masseyville plant's gonna get some upgrades, gonna be minor. Grizzleville plant's older than I am. And then Light and Ty has all, has been a constant issue for a while. As part of the Homer Roberts Road, Graham Road phase, we replaced one bad section of Light and Ty. From Overland Way, we went back about six or seven hundred feet. If, if you go down Light and Ty, hit it south, go past Overland, go around the curve over the hill. You go a tenth of a mile, maybe point one five, there's a fire hydrant on the right. All the way to it, fire hydrants brand new. That was an area that had split three times. So that, we got that out of the picture. We do the Light and Ty booster station. There's a couple of areas in there that are bad pipe. We're gonna replace those. We, we need the larger diameter pipe to begin with for the pump station. I, our big question, well, I think for me, there's two of them. What is the appetite for raising rates? Because I don't know how much more the county can afford with the rates we have in place. Two, with the current list of unfunded projects that we have talked about in different times, which ones do you wanna do? Once we know, we can get a cost on them, we can send them to Mr. Seals.
Bobby.
Bobby. And get him to run a lot of them and see what we need to do. Update it to where we are and then see what we need to do.
So just backing up real quick, you have approximately two million to spend. Do you have an idea of what the individual costs of each of those projects are?
Light and Ty was about between two and three million. A Grizzle, a new Grizzleville plant that's out of the bottom on the hill, it's gonna be probably forty-five million dollars. I think Masseyville and this isn't including the well, I don't think. It would be nice if we could add a larger clear well there. If we can't, I think we make it work. We have to update a little chemical feed equipment, which will be twenty thousand bucks, thirty thousand bucks. It's, it's not, it's not major. Henderson Road is probably less than a hundred because it, again, that's chemical feed. Uh, if we get out and actually build a lab there and do some of the other things we talked about, naturally that's, that's gonna go up significantly.
And these have to be spent, the, the two million has to be within the scope of the original projects?
The, the COVID ARPA money does. It, it had, when, when it was submitted, it had a specified project area and it has to stay in that project area.
That's where the two million's coming from?
No.
Okay, so where's the two million?
Out of your bond money.
Alright, so the bond money's unrestricted, gotcha.
Yeah, when, I wouldn't say unrestricted, but, uh, when, so when, when you go through that whole process, you, we submitted a list of, of, I think it was five different projects. So it was Graham Road, highway forty-nine, uh, water treatment upgrades.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, go ahead. Elevated tank.
Elevated tank and then, can't remember what the fifth one was, but there were five specific things that we submitted. Now, I don't know that, I, I don't think it was specific enough to say Henderson Road plant upgrades. I think it said water treatment plant upgrades, but.
Correct.
Um, but yeah, so there are some, you know, constraints on, on that money, but, um, more, more flexibility than the ARPA money, I would say.
So for me, I mean, obviously the most bang for the buck, right? Anything that increases capacity and also increases customer base, I think is critical when you start to apply for loans. You know, I'm not a fan of raising water rates, um, that benefit the entire county. I'm a fan of the entire county pitching in to, um, extend water in, in those respective directions. A hundred K, three, thirty K, I mean, that, that's easy, that's low hanging fruit. I think that's a no-brainer. Um, Light and Ty, water main replacement, Grizzleville upgrades.
How much on the Wilkinson County?
Between seven, eight million bucks.
And how much would it have been if we could've got Twigs County?
Probably between four and five.
Cause I had another commissioner to come up to me for that.
You took my credit?
Mm-hmm.
You hit a fitter.
So that's three.
What three did you get? Cause right now, though, they're working with them, it, it didn't sound good last week. They talked to you last week?
Yeah, I talked to him the night we were all together. He was standing around, it's happened.
That was not the message they sent him and the message they've reiterated to me since y'all were there.
Mm-hmm. They gonna get a piece, big piece of the pie if we're gonna get order out of Twigs County. This is exactly what I was.
Is that coming from the chairman?
Huh?
Is that coming from the chairman?
No, it's coming from the interim, uh, um, county administrator and two of the county commissioners.
Just out of curiosity, what was presented or what was offered?
So the conversations on all that started with their prior EMA director slash water superintendent. And what he had suggested, talking to me in Tim, was like five cents a thousand. And so just as a royalty, I think we called it in the, in the draft agreement. And so that's what, that's how we drew it out. That's what we presented to their board. Chairman and I went that time and Brandon and I had gone one time prior to that. In that second conversation, we didn't receive the warm fuzzies when we initially mentioned that. And so I, I remember saying to him, you know, we can certainly negotiate. Uh, this is not a take it or leave it type deal. But then we never really heard anything much after that. And so there were concerns about taking a lot of water out of their aquifer, uh, as they put it. And, and if, if we were gonna take water from there, you know, I, I think they were expecting a lot more money. I think is kind of the gist of it.
The, the gist of the deal though is, is I think they were, talking to one commissioner, they were more interested in it today money. Because they were, you know, my tell, we took a sixty-five thousand dollar check down there that we owe. That we've been waiting on the bill for six months. And they said we owed them forty-five and we went down to a sixty-five because they didn't calculate it right, so. But, um, um. But the deal was is, uh, they were more, what we, what we can do today. And I, and I made, I said, as far as the negotiation side, I said, we can come up with just a flat, you know, say twenty thousand a year, starting day one. And all we need is just their signature allowing us to pump water out of that county for, is that EP?
EPD.
EPD. Just saying, yes, we have no problem. That would get, and I, and I talked with a win-win situation and, uh, um, I guess you, you've talked to them since I talked to them and it was like, uh, they wanted a lot bigger piece of the pie.
Yeah.
Obviously, we're building the infrastructure there because they're not committing to any of that, right? Um, are we gonna supply them with water?
You could if you wanted to.
Through the Donlin Road area and all up through there?
Well, we, we looked at different areas. We had, originally we had not thought about going that far because there are two test wells that we had looked at on the corner of Henderson and. the Foul Line Freeway on the left. That looked like they could be forty-five hundred gallons a minute a piece. So, I mean, if we could swing a thousand gallons a minute out of there and send it back to Henderson, that would bump Henderson to seventeen hundred gallons a minute, which is about two and a half million gallons a day.
And that would help supply to the industrial park.
It'd be huge.
So. In the art of negotiation, I mean, I, I, I understand that there's a give that should happen. And, and maybe we reopen talks because obviously, if that's cheaper than us building it out ourselves on our side of the county, what, what's their ask, you know? Cause if we were supplying water to them under like a gray agreement where they're paying us, it's almost like making water authority to us, right? We gave them a whole lake and they're charging us for water.
Well, you know, they, back to their, their stints on the water. Was it three and a half million dollars they spent on a water project that's got fourteen customers on it?
That I don't know. The part we did, the part we did was a CDVG, so it was a half million dollars. And it's got probably fourteen to fifteen customers. And then the, the area, the other area we did was out at Exit twenty-four on Highway ninety-six. And it's got the academy, it's got a hotel on it, it's got the Walthaw Oil Facility on it. And maybe fifty or sixty customers out there. It's got all the businesses that are out there around it that are, are on it.
So in the location where this would go, is there any opportunity for commercial or residential development?
It'd be right there at Henderson in, in fifty-seven, right there where the shortstop is. There's a sign, been there for a while for a truck stop coming. Yeah, I don't know if truck stops coming or not. I don't, I don't know what they need.
And the thing is this too, if we think futuristic, we get industry in the industry park. People gotta have a place to live if they're not already here. There's a whole lot more land in Twigs County to buy than in Jones County to buy to build a house on. And especially in that area right through there. So they would have growth.
If you could sell that. I don't know. I'm just gonna say up the offer, make it make sense if, if we really want that site. Because the cost to build a plant on our side is eight million, seven, eight million. And that's four to five. And I don't know who's getting the truth, you or Chris, so.
I've got his car down in my car.
Well, let's, let's step back a minute. Those wells running the line weren't getting back to Henderson was in the four, four million, it was close to four million, four, one, four, two. I don't know, I'm not positive that included all of plant upgrades. Because the big thing at the plant that would have to be upgraded is clear well. The aerator would have to be upgraded, the high service pumps, chemical feed. And then we would finish the sixteen inch line up Henderson Road to the sixteen. So, if you look at the spreadsheet that Jason gave y'all, it has all the different projects listed. What's in bond money, what's in this COVID ARPA money. The Jifa for the sewer. The Jifa for the water meter upgrade. One Georgia, which is for sewer. What we had at new construction to date, this was done on January thirtieth. And what we had in construction savings on the, as of January thirtieth. The, the one option about Wilkinson County, the water line upgrades that we need in that area could be covered by the COVID ARPA money. The first three and a half million was a three point nine million. For that area was a fifty percent match. Remaining five and a half million is straight grant money.
Oh, wow.
So, I, I believe I can run all the way up to the Jones Wilkinson County line and COVID ARPA money pay for it. I'm pretty sure I can lay sixteen inch ductile layer and COVID ARPA money pay for all of it. So, you know, reality would be nice to have boost. If you could get a thousand out of one and a thousand out of the other, that's basically three million gallons a day to go with what we have, we'd probably be set for ten or fifteen years. Cause eventually, eventually, I think the county will have to go to a surface water plant. I, I think eventually, to get, to get a large quantity, I think you'll end up going to a surface water plant sooner or later. Will I see that in my lifetime? I doubt it. Jason probably will. He may be on the way out. That may be a good reason for him to retire and go home.
Can I, Commissioner McKitchens, what we learned in our class, Muddy, reckon that's a?
Yeah, whether it's, uh,
We had one speaker. She impressed me very.
Not indirect. Congressional discretion. Not a discretion.
That's what's on here. A potential for congressional directed.
Directed, I see it.
And they're very interested in finding multiple counties working together. And, I mean, she, uh, she did a great job, real good job, that, that young lady, uh. I think you got her car too, didn't you?
Yeah, let me see if I got it.
But she, uh, these are projects they're looking for to get multiple counties to work together in partnership to get these, you know. This would be a slam dunk for what, cause the county, cause it would get their industrial park. If you wanna shoot for the stars, they could get them, they could get them, uh, water and sewer if they needed it. If it, if it was enough, you know, there.
I think the closing the gap on what was offered versus what, what is needed or what might seem more reasonable, behooves us, right, to extend that conversation. And again, if that's Jason or that's you, you and Jason, it, it doesn't matter. I don't know how y'all came to twenty thousand. It might be a hundred thousand, I don't know. But if that water unlocks more for us, it's worth a hundred thousand, right?
I think the twenty came off of the original. If you figure the original deal at, what was it?
The, the five cents a thousand, I think we figured would come to fifteen or sixteen thousand a year.
Right.
I think is what, you know, and it all would vary based on how much we pulled. But I, I think just some preliminary math we had done was somewhere in that range.
But the conversation was banned because Twig- Twigs County's had to pay for that water project that's got fourteen. And
Twenty thousand doesn't do much towards paying for it.
Yeah, but you know, if, if, if they need a, a today cash flow, you know, if it was fifteen, sixteen thousand, if you just say, you know, twenty thousand a year guaranteed, you know, on, on, on the, maybe that one well to the two well.
Well, there's two, there's two up there, but I mean, what, the area we had looked at, there'd be two wells.
And I think that figure was based off of two wells production.
At a nickel a thousand, a million gallons a day is fifty bucks a day. Fifteen hundred a month, eighteen thousand a year. At a nickel a thousand.
And all they had to do is take the check and cash it. I understand. Just, you know, just, we didn't, we're not getting nothing from making water authority, so I, I, you know.
I agree with you.
I agree.
They don't wanna be the, they don't wanna be the Jones County to make an order authority. And I get that, right? If we had a need, and again, you could demonstrate the need of, if we got the industrial park sold tomorrow, we need it.
With most of them, what we have, we, we would.
And it's better to negotiate before you need it, and need it, and try to negotiate for it.
We never know unless you ask, but Wilkinson County, what possibilities we could have there. I mean, that, I think Wilkinson County would be, let's talk with them, say if they've got any interest. I don't think anybody from Wilkinson County was at that class we took, but I highly recommend that class. I enjoyed it. It was a good class. It really opens your eyes on how things take place. But that young lady right there, she, when she got through talking, I'm going, wow. I wish you, we're up in North Georgia, I wish you was closer, but Sam said, you know, the young lady in this area
Yeah.
very well too, so.
They have these, um, Warnock, Shavanda, is it Shavanda Hill?
Yeah, I just texted her.
She's the same, she's the director of outreach.
Right.
And they're in districts, so she's, she's ours.
Yeah, I just, she said my leadership's close. So I just texted her and said what kind of federal money's out there for Wilkinson, which we need it.
For joint county ventures. I mean, it's worth, it's worth a trip. Sam, myself and, and Jason come up there and just see what, what their thoughts are.
If you look at this last page, that's got different projects, this is on Jason's spreadsheet. Is there anything that needs to be added to this list?
A magnifying glass.
Glad I got my new lenses in, I can see just better.
Can you see now?
Heck, yeah.
You see better with the Tim's or my glasses?
I see better with mine, but I didn't bring it with me, honestly.
Ruby drive.
I feel smarter just wearing these things. Wearing Tim's glasses.
Here, here's something. Try these. See if they, see if you start moving when you wear these.
Alton and McCreary, and I know you said there were some challenges, but. And the, um, Cole.
Cole and Shelby. Yeah, yeah, we got Shelby court upgrades. We don't have a number there for it.
I'm over fifty, man. Okay. So Shannon, we all need reading glasses.
Oh, God.
ARP, here we come.
Sorry about my leadership, though, here. Sam, you haven't held it over here for you?
Yeah, no. So the, the River North Water Line upgrades, we don't have any estimates on that?
No. One, I don't, one, I don't know how much we do. Two, I've talked to a couple contractors and all they was laughing. I mean, cause I don't. I wish, I wish I had the pictures that he, Brandon took. The line broke across the street from the clubhouse. Here's the edge of pavement, right here.
I remember that picture.
Up against the edge of pavement was a phone line. Underneath it, two, three inches was a conduit with a phone line, yeah, it was offset. Here was the water line. There was a phone line a half foot away from it. There was a gas line on the back. There was underground power on the back. Gas was there and there was another phone line. You're talking about eight feet.
That's that picture you sent us that, that y'all backed in doubt.
The whole place is like that.
You, you wanna know why it's so hard to fix?
Now, there's two additional fibers in there too.
So.
There's no way to. I mean.
Well, that's the way, I, I got a good idea.
Under, under the road, just, Tim, y'all can't go out there.
Take three foot on either side of the road, that's six foot. Take four foot down the center and put a concrete median. Keeps people from running across with cut throughs at every intersection. And bore right down the middle of the road. And then you concrete it back with a four inch curb down the middle of the road. You took, or take two foot on either side, four foot in the middle.
That's right, it's a super wide.
You could make that a travel lane for the golf courts and golf carts and bikes.
There you go. Just ramp it up on the ends of, of the curb instead of a drop off.
I like it.
Make the markings in the middle of the cross rock.
Cheaper than concrete.
But you need to talk to him and tell him what needs to happen.
Well, they, they definitely know, um, I get more and more calls over there, especially every time we have a water line break. Cause we're, we're constantly, Ryan and I were talking about the other day, we've had nine breaks on this one road. And when we started pulling them up, I would count as six of them are in the last two and a half years. You know, that's, it ain't getting any better. I mean, those are original water lines. It's on a rock. It's, it got no, I mean, it's, it's bad. And, you know, they're, they're, they're not expecting us to do something, but, you know, it's our water and sewer, but we do. I think it's a good chance for us to go back to them and say, look, we, this was all put in originally, or it was all maintained with the, with the, uh, the, uh, the special tax district, you know? That money's run out, that longevity of the pipes run out, the life, the life cycle of that, that project is run out. It's time to re-up or we're gonna keep having problems.
Well, not only that, they've increased the amount of homes in there.
I think that's a, a reasonable conversation.
Yeah.
And then throw in, if you can, project, you know, five, ten, twenty years down the road, what they're gonna need. Because we know that condominiums may be going in and somebody else may have a plan to build some more homes back there.
Yeah, we, we know that that's gonna be coming before soon.
Shoot my, my plan down there, Tim, is there anything that, like, sounds really crazy? I mean, yeah, you're adding on asphalt and seal coating the top of it, cutting the middle of it. Is that even a, tell me what I'm missing from the engineering standpoint?
Is anything under that road already?
In places of the sanitary sewer line, that'll be in and out. Powers behind the curb, there's gas, so you'll have gas across the road here and there. So, I don't know how wide that road is back a curb, back a curb, but you're talking about going down the middle of the road, take four feet out, make an island there. Put more line in it, grass it back, and leave it, have crosswalk. Or you could pave it, make a golf park.
Like a, a bike lane or a golf cart lane or?
Is that road wide enough to do that? He's taking four feet. Oh.
Two feet on either side of the road. Can't do that.
I mean, when you say two feet on either side.
From the center line.
If it's twenty, if it's twenty-six foot back a curb, back a curb.
Yeah.
All right, two twelve foot travel, that leaves you twenty-five feet from the face of the curb. So you're talking about taking out four feet.
Talking about adding on two feet on the outside of the road.
So you're gonna repay the, we're gonna repave it anyhow, I imagine, but you're talking about.
Seal coat it anyway.
So you wanna, so you wanna add two feet on each side.
And then take four foot out of the middle.
Rip out all the curves.
And put them, uh.
That gives you your lanes and then a four foot median in the middle.
Redo your storm drains.
Yeah.
All your storm drains, curbs, gutter and all that, it'd be ripped out. It's worth some major money.
Where are the, where are the inlets on the storm drains now?
Curb line. Most, a lot of them are at the bottom of the hills, you know.
You could put surface mount. Let the road run on passing, you know, medium. They got them like that all over making.
If I go from the curb, it's there, over two feet. I'm assuming I'm gonna build a curb there.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I've added, in reality, I've added four feet of asphalt and then four feet of curb. So all the boxes will be redone. They probably would love it, cause they got storm drain falling, failing all over the place because it was corrugated metal.
So win-win.
Might be, you know, something off right there. I guess we need to see what the, what the cost is of, cause I was thinking about if, if we just go down the middle of the road and dig it up, and then patch it back, and it's under the middle instead of the outside. Well, then we're stopping traffic. They got no thoroughfare through there. Lot of process, projects going on, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we would have to temporary make sure it's full GAB, so once everybody got out, they're going to work, going to school, they'd come back work until everybody come home.
That's a nightmare. I'd, I'd say put it down in the middle of one lane, make it one lane traffic and go around the work zone the whole time. In between the white line and the yellow line, just middle of a.
I mean, we can do that, but if we do that, it needs to be ductile iron.
Yeah.
And it probably needs to be copper. So we're not going back in there. Neither, me nor you would see him go back in there.
Yeah.
Because the ductile ain't gonna split, it ain't gonna leak.
What was that?
Tim, where would you place your fire hydrants? In the center, over the top of the water line, or would you write it off to the side and put it on the, right away?
Put them on the side, I mean, we can put them on the side, make sure they had access. I mean, you want to walk out there and go, we're gonna look, I've been out there four or five times, and just walking and looking at places, trying to figure out, if I had to put a water line in, where would I put it in?
Let's do that, man, get, get some numbers with it, and then go talk to them, you know, they, uh, I mean, I don't, I don't know how else to come to a, amicable solution. I mean, they're calling saying, we gotta have something. It's not, we know it's not getting any better. It's a nightmare for us to fix the leaks, and it's costing us money every time. We're not selling water, and we're not, and we're paying people to, to not sell water to fix it.
How far is it from the back gate to where the line comes out at, uh, from Town Creek? How far do you think that is? Three miles?
A few miles for sure.
It says three miles, just, just. All right, that's fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty feet. We're spending a hundred and fifty-three dollars a foot laying county water line now, a hundred and fifty-three dollars a foot. So three, three miles for the water line's two point four, two point four, five million dollars, okay? That's no asphalt, that's no curbing, that's no storm drainage. I mean, that's nothing, that's not swapping services, that's just water line. So, by the time we, a tie-in at intersections, probably gonna run you seventy-five hundred to ten thousand dollars an intersection. You got two at every intersection. I mean, you probably got fifteen thousand bucks, ten intersections, that's another hundred and fifty. Pavement, we bid, I got a job bidding Friday, they're telling me Class A pavement replacement, which is concrete and asphalt's a hundred and five dollars a foot. So at fifteen thousand feet, that's gonna be another million and a half dollars.
So five million easy.
Plus your aggravation factor. I bet that'll be thirty, forty percent. So I wouldn't be surprised if it's seven, eight million bucks. I mean, it wouldn't surprise me at all.
And how much do we get on that first?
One point three million.
On the note?
One mill covered one point three million. That's where the one point three million came from. It was about half of what we needed.
For, for five years?
Twenty.
One mill for twenty years is one point five million?
It covered the debt service for one point five million, for those five hundred and forty homes that were in there. Isn't that right?
It's just one mill.
Had one, was one.
And you gonna need, all right, you talking about?
Plus the one that's there, it, it paid off until.
Another fifteen years, say?
So it's got at least two years, possibly four more years.
So I don't think it would be a problem re-upping that one, no doubt, but. I don't know. Doing nothing's not an answer to that.
Would you say asphalt's running a foot now?
Asphalt? I was told today to expect pricing Friday at a hundred and two dollars a foot for Class A pavement, which is the removal for a compacted back, they put four inches of GAB, four inches of concrete, and then two inches of asphalt.
It's cost me a hundred and eighty a foot to do it all.
The problem, the problem you run into is that it's not a large quantity.
Right.
And so you got an asphalt plant at Reeves or whoever, that's producing three, four thousand tons, for their guys to go lay it, and they're getting a hundred and forty dollars a ton. They don't, they don't care you need thirty tons. I mean, all you are is in the way. Teesplash has been great for these counties, has been better for the, for the asphalt companies. Because they're, they're not as busy as they wanna be right now, but they're busy, and there's, there's a nice backlog of work.
So I'm not asking y'all to make any final decisions or anything, but, um, on the, the GFA clean water funds, so that's, it's gotta be sewer related. The River North items there, it sounds like we wanna look at the special tax district and maybe doing something through that. The Coal Drive Shelby Court issue that we talked about, is the board generally okay with us kinda pursuing the, the design piece of that? And coming back to you, and we can bid that out maybe later this year?
Yes.
Yeah, Coal Drive's been a problem for a few years.
Were there any other sewer things that we had talked about that y'all can think of? Is it potential use for the quote-unquote leftover GFA money?
I mean, you've got Shelby, I would say Shelby and Cole is moving on. Lift station, the two, two and three, make burn what's left.
But if we didn't touch the River North stuff, if we did that through another funding source, was, were there any other sewer things outside of River North that we had talked about? Y'all remember, I was just trying to think. That may be everything there.
We had this dust. Was it two, um, we should be struggling for?
Maybe so.
I think we had a number on that somewhere. They may, they may get something else.
We've discussed running sewer from the Matty Wells line up before we found out where his office is, in that bottom there, we talked about that a couple times. We're not sure where the drain field is. We know where the pump station is, we know where it directs and do, we don't know where it goes.
Just trying to think of something we could do, you know, I, I think it's gonna be a million and a half or something that, that we have after the, after the forced main project.
Can Ruby fit into that?
Is there any way to, to do a small piece of that Ruby Drive area? Without getting into a ton of money?
We probably can run the line in front of the lift station up to, up to Alton, I think that's the first one. Or maybe over toward Ruby's. I mean, color, it's got, there's gonna be a couple of holes, a couple of places, it's gonna be, it appears it's gonna be deep. And then to, to go that route, we're gonna be in some backyards, some kind of fences take down, we got this beast that's, that might be a building, too, that obviously moved, you know, like they don't see your Christmas story films, that kind of stuff.
Is, is that on McCrery Drive that you're talking about? Or Alton? So you come down New Clinton and then make a right in those backyards to go through there?
Jason, if you, the, the left side, if you will, do that, where the thing comes down, those first two roads right there?
Yeah.
All right, good, we're breaking. Hey, you wanna, you can go.
Commissioner Martin, a young lady was here, asked me about her septic. Have you touched base with her again since she got her, uh, did she say you were gonna reach out to her?
I did talk with her, um, I should say. No, 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 not her, um.
Young lady, she was a guest who came up?
I told her when we, we were having this meeting, and that I would talk to her after this meeting. The other lady who's been on Ruby Drive for the longest, um, calling in about their water and sewer issue, she was supposed to come to this meeting, but she didn't, so, yeah.
I just wondered if they looked at all terms, I've had two, two houses on Ruby that I've actually been able to fix. I've got two, I had two, I only got one of Ruby right now. And, yeah, it was an upgraded system, but it, it fixed it.
So you've got the plan or something?
Well, she was gonna get with Miss Maggie, and I was just curious.
Okay.
That was, I said, if you call me, I was just curious what she came up with, 'cause, uh, I know four I've personally had to fix, that, yeah, I went through an ATU system, but it, it fixed it.
Right, I heard you mention that. If you've got, you know, costs or something like that, I can give you estimates.
Been a long time since.
Gotcha.
I don't do it anymore, it's been eighteen to twenty, so I don't know what it is now.
This is the Sun Valley. Yeah, is there a question there?
Yeah, you can, you can click on it, parcel it, and it'll show up.
Okay.
If you show the cursor point.
That's right, this is, I like that area there, this is Sun Valley Pump Station. That's the thing, that's Alton. No, that's a, Arthia?
I'm the, uh, Arithia McCrery.
That's Alton.
Uh, Alton's, yeah, I'm, that's right.
So we probably can get up into those areas. I don't know how far, I don't know. But I've got some pretty detailed stuff that we did from the, where we tried to do the twenty nineteen CVG, we can put a number on it.
Were you talking about the, the line coming between the two streets, or you would be?
There is a, at the corner of Athune and Dusty Lane, there's a wet wall of dits that runs down to the pump station.
Okay.
So you would come up there in the front. The other one, you would come up Shirley Drive and get over to, uh, Alton, part of Alton anyway. But a lot of this is, like I say, is in backyards, and you cut over through the backyards where the drains were, uh, for the gravity door.
'Cause if it's between Alton and McCrery, I've got four acres that, that happened, that y'all have for that, if it was an issue.
Is that, that piece there? Let me, let me get that together, and we'll get some updated numbers, and I guess we have the next one we can, we'll have that where you can see it. I just know I've got, I got cost estimates from two contractors in the last two weeks. Ten inch gravity sewer. On one to ten, it's probably a six difficulty, maybe seven. Fourteen foot to three foot down to fourteen foot cut, it was three hundred dollars a foot. Manholes, everything, it was three hundred dollars a foot. So we were running thirty-two hundred, thirty-eight feet of media bucks. Yeah, I mean, it was just. Wow.
So you did it a long time ago. What's the lift station cost, Mark?
I bid one in Old Ford a month ago. Structure was there, this, and this is a two million gallon per day pump station, just seven hundred thousand dollars. We were taking the station off and putting a new one there, in some pipe. Did one recently in Twigscane in, in the last summer, two hundred gallons a minute, submersible, six foot nine or wet well, it was sixteen foot deep. It was two ninety, two seventy-five, two eighty-five, something like that.
But like, I put one in for fifty houses in Swainboro that was, uh, thirty thousand dollars.
What we talking about then, two thousand?
I just know them, but I'm going, man, they have gone, wow. Yeah, we could have, I should have stayed in that business.
Well, I'd say that's the problem.
Yeah, I mean, I, you see what I'm saying, I actually.
They're not that many guys left doing it.
Yeah.
So, Tim, I know we're wide open on time, but when, when are we gonna start talking about some sewer that'll bring us some money in, some revenue? I don't know, like Gray Highway. 'Cause I think.
I'm ready when you are.
I think we gotta, we gotta look at that corridor that, that is gonna develop and get us some money. We can't just keep looking at, how do we get people off septic tanks onto sewer? I mean, that is the backbone of us, but, but the, they're not, that's not, that's gonna cost us money, but, and, but it's the right thing to do, but, you know. I think the offset that is get us some commercial customers on sewer, that's when we start evening it out a little bit. But it's gonna cost a lot.
I'll tell you the same thing I told one of my water and sewer authorities, and the chairman started laughing, and he shot me a bird. I said, all it takes is a check, just give me a check. And he laughed at me, and he shot me a bird, and said, you need to go home.
I heard Congressman two days ago says, you fund it, I'll build it, all day long. So.
The other thing that's on the agenda tonight, this is what our lightning tie tank will look like. So, which logo do you own, do you own the, or do you own the stripe?
Oh, the stripe, okay.
I like the stripe.
It costs more money for the stripe, and put the logo on it, I'm like, well. Which one y'all like the most? I'm good.
I'm good.
You're the one, um.
Yeah, me too.
Stripe.
Y'all got, y'all, y'all have to make the decision, so just whatever y'all decide. They're not, they're not gonna call.
See, just on one side? It's just gonna be seen from one side first?
No, JC will be on both sides. We'll probably, what we'll do is we'll have it facing Homer, and then facing that over and away from the door to convenience there.
Right, you have a scene.
Stripe, no stripe.
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 Stripe, I see one. Yes, dear.
And I will get you the paint.
Get in the regular meeting.
Uh, I will get you the paint schemes, whatever they are, those numbers.
Yeah, he says the one for the, the purple.
Okay, but not the gold?
The gold, he said he never, he didn't remember ever buying any.
Then how does he get them? I'll call Eric at the sign station and see what the yellow is.
So, Tim, remind us, did we get a cost on doing, on sewer Gray Highway? And, and you gave it to us twice, three times, four times?
Just a check.
Last one was sixteen feet.
If that's not high enough, I, I think that.
I got more.
I like that, if that's not high enough.
We got jokes around here.
So, I, I think a year or so ago, so I got an application a year or so ago for congressionally directed spending, it was kinda right at the last minute, and never been through that process before, didn't know what was okay to ask for, what wasn't okay to ask for, so we put in for, for the whole kit and caboodle on sewer.
A whole cap?
Plant, yeah, well, a plant, tying in the two areas, and then I think there were six neighborhoods that we had looked at at various times that. that we had looked at at various times that, uh, that, you know, have septic issues. And so to, to do all that, it was like fifty million bucks.
Yeah, eight or sixty.
Yeah, and so that's what I put in the application for. And so, Senator Osos, people called and they said, got your application there bud. That's not really what this is for. And so, uh, they said, you know, really this is designed for if you've got a, a small funding gap on a project you're already doing, something in the like two to three million dollar range, that's generally the type of things that we'll fund. And so, um, but anyway, I say all that to say, I think depending on, you know, if, if you're planning to do all of those pieces at the same time, it's, it's closer to, to fifty million bucks.
Well, we, then we do have a funding gap. We can handle about two million. That's a forty-eight million dollar gap.
It don't hurt to think big, they might surprise you one time.
No, I mean, we've, we've talked about it before, I think we all know that we're not gonna move the needle if we don't do something big. We don't, and I don't, I, I mean, I know the chairman don't like going in debt, I don't either, but there are some things that are not, you're never gonna save up enough to do water and sewer, we talked about it.
Good debt and bad debt.
Yeah, and, and we're gonna have to go in debt if we're gonna, if we're gonna do anything. And I think that corridor along Gray Highway is a huge missed opportunity.
And I think if we're gonna talk big, let's go on and go to Bradley, you know?
If we're gonna talk big, be done with the sewer, had water treatments, whatever we need on forty-nine, um.
To the industrial park?
To the industrial park. And it might look like a hundred million, I don't know, but if you, we could have done all of these projects years ago for fractions of a dollar. And we thought it was a lot then, now it's a lot, it's five times that amount.
It's gonna be a lot lot.
Right.
Ten years from now.
And exactly, I'd rather do that, bite the bullet, splashed, whatever, um, and, and raise the money and pay on it now in today's dollars than tomorrow dollars, if you're gonna do it.
You like that idea too?
Yeah. And you know you're gonna get instant payback from Hampton Lakes, um, Clifton Ridge, cause all of that sewer. We're paying out now anyway, to a city who raises rates.
Yeah.
To just like.
You don't like to raise rates, but we'll have to raise rates for some of these projects to pay for it.
If, if you're gonna do a comprehensive project, it makes sense to raise the rates, but I think when you do that, you look at all the parcels that this is going to reach. You can't do it off the back of four thousand customers, you gotta do it off of sixteen thousand parcels. Uh, and the reality is that it'll get there eventually, but you're paying it forward so that when it comes, it doesn't kill you, because I don't know what a city of, of gray person pays for water, but I think it's four times the amount of a regular water bill in Jones County. For example, my mother-in-law probably paid thirty-two dollars a month. And I'm sure a gray water bill is over a hundred bucks.
No, it's not bad.
Twenty.
It's fifty, it's like fifty.
Okay, so it's double, I'm sorry.
If you have sewer.
It's almost double.
The sewer doubles the, essentially doubles the water bill, but if you have a septic tank, you know?
So with sewer, it's fifty dollars or with sewer, it's a hundred dollars?
Basically doubles.
Sewer, my bill, and it's always like a minimum, it's like fifty six.
It probably has your garbage in there too, probably has your garbage bill in there too.
And so that's single resident, which is probably not common in gray, right? So, the point is, it's, it's more, um, and the reality is that we know if we put it in the ground now at today's price and people are paying today's money for it, even, you know, if it costs a hundred million dollars for it, and I don't know what that equates to, cause I don't do math that high normally, um, if the service debt on it is ten million dollars a year or, or whatever, if we're paying fifty dollars a parcel to get it done, now we've made it make sense for an entire county. It'll take you thirty years to raise rates to cover that, and it's unrealistic for it to happen. You know, it's a courageous conversation and, and if you do build it and you have the field of dreams and you build and they come down Gray Highway, great. They pay it down and you're able to reduce that cost earlier, instead of you paying twenty-five dollars a parcel, it might be ten dollars a parcel. Um, it makes sense, you know? Bless you.
Bless you.
If we could have got a hit years ago, cause the industrial park was ready, could you imagine, you know, ten or fifteen years worth of revenue off of water and sewer and industrial park? And then, now we'd be past the tax evasion period, where now we're gonna collect taxes on a six billion dollar facility.
Sound like we, we got some more, we got, we all got homework to do. Yeah, we're gonna need another work session, I wanna save, look, I wanna save some time for Tim, but, uh, we all got homework to do. And some, uh, see if we come up with some ideas or ideas and have another work session to see what we found. That sound good? Anything else on water and sewer? All right. Could we move to the package sales ordinance on the, planning zone aside?
Yes, and so, uh, we can swap out one Tim for the other and, uh, uh, or Tim, you, uh, you don't have to move anywhere. But, uh, I thought in the amount of time we have left, if, if, uh, y'all have questions related to the zoning aspect of the package sales, maybe we can work through some of that while we have Tim here. And, uh, Tim, I don't know if you just wanna answer questions or you wanna share thoughts and then answer questions or however you wanna?
Thoughts are the same as the letter I laid out several months ago about just needing to identify which zoning district you want to place these in. Simply let me know and we will begin that process for you.
What was the difference between commercial one and commercial two?
C one is the neighborhood commercial district, smaller scale things, convenience stores. C two is everything up to and including Walmart.
So most everything, we got C one now?
No, sir. Uh, if I had to guess, I'd say seventy-five percent is C two. Just a guess off the top of my head.
But if we go, if we approve C one, it's C one and C two would be?
That's correct, it's kind of a pyramid, if it's allowed in C one, it's allowed in C two. If it's allowed in C two, it's not allowed in C one.
What's your thought?
Y'all only allowed four of them, right?
Well, we hadn't made that decision, I mean, would y'all just start off with four?
I, I still say start out with four. Sorry, David.
I, I just, you're gonna be back here, but okay.
That's fine, we can come back, but.
Tim, I got a question on square footage, I know we talked it down to about a thousand square feet, that's kinda small as far as inventory and sales counter area and, you know, the janitorial area of a store too. You really get into a limited store, as far as inventory. And I, I thought about it, cause I know my office building is six hundred square feet, it's tight, you add a little bit to it, it's still tight. Fifteen hundred's more reasonable to have a decent sized store. If you look at a convenience store, like Flash Foods or Circle K, something of that size, you know, they got a decent sales area.
But it's not for us to decide what size a, a business wants to be. If the business wants to be a thousand square feet, because that's their niche, I think they have a right. We're just saying that's the minimum, and if they say, hey, we need a footprint of fifteen hundred, sure, we just said a minimum is a thousand. Um, I, I don't, you know, I, I can't tell you the last time I've been in a liquor store, but the one on Sherlin Drive that has a drive-through, it looks like it used to be a house, that might be a thousand, and that's total.
It would be pushing to get it down.
Yeah, that's total, right? When you walk in the store, you got two hundred square feet maybe?
Just, wait, wait through the three lines.
Yeah, two hundred square feet, like you walk in, you turn, and then the rest of it is their store. But when you go to Northside Drive, the place that's in the little shopping center, it's a counter and then everything is out on the floor. So it just depends on which approach the owner decides that they go with. You know, I think a two hundred square foot store is crazy, but they do it, you know, that's the only space you have and you tell them what you want and they give it to you. And then the little store at, um, across from Bowden, how big is that?
It's pretty big.
That's about fifteen hundred.
About fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not that I'd go into it, I'll say.
It's okay. When I'm biking, it's convenient for Gatorade. But, you know, I, I, again, I think is, is a thousand square feet is the minimum, I don't, I don't know. I let them decide that. C two, C one, you know, as far as I'm concerned, do both.
Would be C one.
Oh, well, yeah, C one, sorry.
Yeah. C one and it'd go into T, C two also. What's your style, Ron? C one, C two?
C one, a what again?
Neighborhoods.
Neighborhood commercial.
Yes.
So are we talking about anybody just be able to walk into my office, get a permit for a liquor store? No public hearings or anything?
See, that's the, that's what I was gonna mention too, do you want it to be a permitted use so that that could happen?
Right.
Or do you want it to be a conditional use so that it has to go through a zoning process and come before P and Z board and then, uh, and then you all?
Would it be conditional to make sure that we're not?
Approaching certain areas. Yeah, public needs to have, public needs to have their say in it.
Right. That's my thought, to have a conditional use with, you know, public hearing the, hearing the drawback. Conditional use, C one? That's fine with me. John?
Public have their say.
Yep, I say conditional use, C one.
But then C two, it's.
I'm sorry?
But for C two, they don't have to have, it's.
They'll still have to get, it'd be some conditional use for C one or C two. Anything that's allowed to C one automatically qualifies for C two, so either one would be conditional use, C one, C two.
Yeah, just to make it clear, let's just say conditional use, C one and C two, and then we'll do two text amendments to plug them into both, so there's no question on that.
Any other thing we need to, uh, think of on the zoning side?
Not on the zoning side, handling it as a conditional use will just require us to review them on a case by case basis.
J C, did anything else we need?
One thing that I thought about related to, that, that Tim may have some dealings with is the, the signage piece of it. There are some things that are specified in state law, uh, in terms of the wording they can have on the outside of the building. But in terms of what type of signage you, you wanna allow on this, do you just wanna stick with what's currently in our ordinance? Are there additional requirements you wanna impose on these stores, um, in the way of the types of signage they're allowed to have?
Really torn on that because I, there ain't much that I dislike worse than having blue, green, or orange neon lights.
Blinding, blinding lights everywhere.
That just, I don't know, that drives me crazy, whether it's a liquor store, a convenience store, or a tattoo parlor. You know, it's just that big gaudy neon, it, it, to me, it just, it trashes up the landscape.
Right.
Sorry, just my, that's my personal feelings on it, but, you know.
Tim, what do we have right now in the way of restrictions or requirements for signage on the outside of commercial buildings in, in those zoning districts? Is?
The maximum size for a sign on the building is thirty-two square feet. And then the freestanding sign is limited to, it's either a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty square feet. Maximum height is either twenty-five or thirty-five feet, I can't remember specifically off the top of my head. The cities and counties ordinances are similar, but not the same.
But nothing dealing with flashing lights or?
There, there is a little bit about flashing and simulating motion, but not rising to the level of Commissioner Kitten, Kitchen's comments. Uh, when you're thinking about outlining of windows with the bright intensity LED lighting and all that, that is not regulated by the county's ordinance.
Okay.
I, I believe it needs to, because I'm, I'm like you, I, that's.
It might need to be looked at.
So just out of curiosity, is the feeling in the room, no LED lights?
I don't think that's what I'm, I'm looking at. The, the LED lights doesn't bother me to have a sign in the window that might have an LED light on it or something like, cause LEDs can be color changing, they can be white, they can be warm white, whatever, they can, I mean, you can make the color anything you want. What, what I don't like is the tackiness of LED rope lights around, especially what it is, rope, rope ri, rope lights around the hole outside of the building. And, I, I guess I'll say it later, so I don't know how to say it, I, I hadn't thought about how to say it nicely, but as you're coming into Gray now, from the bypass, from, from what, if you look at the corner of Ranchers and the corner of the, the, the cornerstone coming into Gray, and then you come on up by the tire place and you come by the haircut, hair store. I mean, even all the new buildings that are being built have, even though we don't have structured design criteria, have been higher quality.
Absolutely, exactly.
And I don't wanna go backwards from that, you know, we've got the historical old Clinton gas and the, and the, uh, the, um, barbecue and, and even, you know, even Dairy Queen's not what it used to be, when, you know, it's a much, a nicer design in all these places. And, and, you know, I, I think we need to, we need to do what we need to do to keep that design. I, I don't wanna get too restrictive where we're running off, people say, well, I can't afford to build one that fancy with three colored blocks and split stone on the front and all that, but.
They can have some class with their operation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to allow just to, to put a, you know, a, a LED rope lights around everything and, and grab more attention going down the road, whether they're flashing or not, I just, I don't like that, I don't know how to. Maybe we need to think about putting something in the ordinance to kinda curtail that a little bit.
So does everybody want us to, to try to craft something, um, related to that?
There was Creekside Gas, I think you're speaking of maybe the way Creekside was several months ago, it, you about need to put on sunglasses at midnight because it was so bright.
Well, the light.
Now they're closed, so it's, it's, you can drive through there without sunglasses.
Well, ninety percent of them.
Right, and that's just an eyesore to me.
We don't want it to look like Pigeon Forge, that's what I saw all, all last week.
Thinking of coming to Dollywood and.
You going down the road, you need your sunglasses on at night, cause all the lights were so bright. If y'all could craft something on the lighting, that would be a, a comfortable lighting and a, I don't know how you do that.
We can lean on the expertise.
Yeah, the expertise.
I know Madison's got some pretty strict.
You have to look at the intensity, the intensity of the lights and that sort of thing.
Um, that might be a place to possibly look for how they do the ordinances for the signs.
You could bring some ideas to us to.
Yes, sir.
Was, is anything else?
And if you could think of anything that we're not thinking of, that'd be great.
That'd be great.
Just a few extra things on your plate.
I'll put together something.
We'll have to ask Tim thoughts.
I'll put together something on some outdoor lighting.
All right, thank you.
Just out of curiosity, again, the freestanding lights, y'all want that signage? No?
Freestanding line.
Freestanding signs?
I don't mind that.
Okay.
Just not the blinking LED light on that there.
It's got, there's a nice way of saying tasteful to it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good enough, healthy.
I don't like outdoor signs.
Anything else for their work session? Please, Tom?
Make a motion to adjourn work session.
Second.
Second, all right. Tim, Tim, everybody, thank y'all.